The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Tonight, everybody that's listening or present, welcome to our town council meeting. Tuesday, February 16, 2021, 7:00 PM. We don't have any, I'm getting a little feedback, is that me or somebody else? So we do not have any presentations or a public hearing tonight. Our first order of business is minutes of the previous meeting. I will ask for a motion to approve, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes from February 1st, 2021, regular meeting, and February 8th, 2021, special meeting.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Onto our announcements and reports. Does anybody have any announcements or reports to make this evening?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Rosemary, go ahead.
Yes, last week I attended two meetings, two groups to which I'm the liaison. On Tuesday night, I attended the Library Board of Trustees and certainly Library Director Thomason reported that the library is continuing to operate smoothly with all the protocols in place. They're also going to be introducing some new databases. One that just got up is called Simply E and it gives access to over 90,000 titles that you can download onto a mobile device, an iPad or a smartphone. Things from New York Public Library, the Connecticut State Library, as well as Overdrive and other sources. And I tried it out today and it worked pretty easily and I think it's going to be, going to be a great resource. And they are going to be introducing at least one other database soon. On Wednesday night, I attended the Conservation Commission and they are planning some spring activities and will be making some decisions and plans at their March meeting, so I'll have those announcements to come in the future. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Rosemary. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to report on since our last meeting? Okay, hearing none, I'll just give a very brief overview of the, the public hearing that occurred regarding Valley Water's request for a rate increase. As you know, I read, I tested, I read it, a statement from the town council into the record regarding Valley Water Increase, various reasons why there is, there should probably be, and we asked that it be postponed until the hardness treatment plan is online. There's a lot of pushback from residents regarding, still regarding the hardness of the quality of the water. There were, there was a bit of financial information. I know that the town manager distributed to everybody the statement that I made, so that is in the file and it is on record. There were approximately participating, one, two, three, four, five, six, about seven people that also provided their opinion and testimony that evening, all from Plainville, of course, mostly focusing on the, the timing of the rate increase in lieu of COVID issues, along with water quality issues that they have personally had regarding appliances, fixtures, taste and those sorts of things. So there was participation by local ratepayers, which is exactly what the commission likes to see, so that when they go ahead to deliberate and make some decisions, they have, they have that testimony in hand. And there is another one coming up. Robert, you will help me with this. I believe it's this coming Thursday in the morning at 9:00 AM. Is that right?
Yes, it is. And we have instructions on the webpage on how people can sign up and participate in that. I will be putting some items on social media as well. People can still submit written testimony by email or by letter, and that information is online as well.
Okay, so as you can see, this is going to go on for some time. There won't be a decision, I don't know, for a number of months, I would suspect, by the time the commission gets through all of the documentation and, and they're questioning to Valley Water regarding this rate increase request. So the town of Plainville is a very active participant in it. I think that's a great thing. I think it, it helps show that our local government has been following this issue very closely and has actively participated in listening to the concerns of our residents. We had those two very large public information sessions that we hosted, and I think the commission was pleased to hear about those things. So we are, we are indeed actively part of that process, and I know that Robert is getting regular updates as this goes along as well. So that is one of my most recent reports that I'd like to make on that. If there are no other reports from anybody else on the council, which I'm assuming not, I'm going to move on to appointments and resignations. We have a couple of things to make here, so we have the 2021 Fire Company Officers. I assume Councilman Nazzle will take care of that for us?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Motion to acknowledge the 2021 Fire Company elected officers and recognize the Fire Company Captain and Lieutenants as officers of the firefight.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, thanks very much for that. Let's see, do we have any other appointments this evening? I know on our list of appointments, there's, there's a number of them from various commissions that probably should be made. If you could all take a quick look at that for our next meeting, we can get those taken care of as well. So there are some that should probably be timely to get done, but we will do it the next time. Next item is Board of Education liaison. I don't know that we have anybody from the Board of Ed on. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move on with that. As you know, the board passed their budget on and it is now in the possession of Town Manager Robert Lee, and ultimately the town council will take care of that. So we'll take a look at that when the time comes. Report of the Town Attorney, Attorney Chomack, do you have anything for us tonight?
No report tonight, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for joining us on our call tonight. The next item is report of the Town Manager. Mr. Lee, you have a number of items, so I'm going to turn this over to you.
Yes, briefly, I just want to go back to appointments and point out that the Fire Company Officers who were elected by the company is, was Captain Bill Gammons, First Lieutenant John Misca, and three other lieutenants being Thomas Moschini Jr., Doug Macarelli, and Adam Barbudo. So just wanted to let people know who was elected from the company and probably should have had that in the motion, but it was a little deeper down in the, the information, so a little tougher to find.
Thank you.
Next item I have is the Fiber Project update. The Fiber Project continues to move forward. This project, when completed, will connect town buildings, schools, police communication repeaters, and several sewer pumping stations to high-speed fiber. The town has contracted with Certex to install the fiber to the, on the utility poles. Before this can be done, work must be performed in many instances to create space for the new fiber. Additionally, some existing utility poles must be replaced to accommodate the new services. This takes a lot of coordination between Eversource, Frontier, Crown Castle, which is basically Comcast, and a company called Fiber Tech before Certex can do their work. Town staff has been conducting monthly updates or meetings with the utilities companies since early summer on this project. It is now anticipated that Certex can begin their work by the end of March. Their installation will take approximately two months. In the interim, the IT Department, led by Kevin Ross, is preparing interconnections with the municipal center, library, police department, fire department, senior center, recreation department, buildings and grounds, and roadways department. They have also begun rewiring the water pollution control facility, setting up data and to ensure that they have the necessary equipment for the fiber. The same will be done to the buildings and grounds that currently do not have internet service. It is expected that the project will be completed early this summer. On the outdoor wireless access points for the town hall and library, through the efforts of the IT Department, again led by Kevin Ross, the town was recently awarded two outdoor access points via a state program to help spread connectivity access across, across Connecticut. The IT Department is suggesting the installation of these access points in the rear of the municipal building and the library, and I believe, Kevin, you have some sketches of how that would play out. This will provide internet service to anyone in the parking lots of these two town buildings. It is expected that these access points will be installed, I believe, during the spring. And Kevin, I don't know if there's anything you want to add on those first two items that we were speaking about with regards to either the Fiber Project or the Wireless Access Points?
Sure. Yeah, we're super excited about the Fiber Project, you know, having some concrete dates moving forward. We're looking forward to getting all those locations online, the pump stations especially from part of that project. Then we'll be moving to, you know, getting the municipal buildings all connected and, you know, coming back to Town Hall. This will help increase the reliability of the phone system. This will allow us to put the phone system into the buildings and grounds and into the water pollution control building, because those two locations have, they have DSL right now, and if that, it's very slow. This will also allow us to make our police repeaters across the town far more redundant because they're not reliant on multiple buildings for the communication to pass through. Where the fiber we're putting in will be direct to the, to the building, to the repeaters. So all the repeat, the ones at Toflon and the one at Buildings and Ground and the one up by Lowe's, those will all be direct. And they'll be all controlled and managed by the company, Goose Town. So it's, it helps me out because whenever I'm doing updates or anything, their repeaters used to go down. So if I updated something in between, it would take it down. So that was a big, big update. Onto the Wi-Fi, this is a grant that the state of Connecticut put out, offered, we qualified as a town for two locations, and we, they wanted them in somewhat public locations. And as you can see on our screen here, this is the town library, this is the back, and this is where the access point will be in this location here, and it will cover this whole back area. This will allow people to come in their car or sit there, sit and use this Wi-Fi in public. This can be part of the, what's called the edgy room, so university students could come or someone who's in any of the state universities and high schools could log in and use it. The other location is the Town Hall, and we thought this was a really, be a good location, A, proximity to the police department, so, you know, we can monitor for people who are sitting here and use this area. So again, the same thing, covering these parking lots and these areas where people can come and access the Wi-Fi. All of this is paid for, we have a five-year license for the hardware. They're actually providing the bandwidth as well, so we don't, we're not even using the bandwidth from the town or, or school connection, they're hooking this up, they're doing all the physical wiring and installation. So hopefully your approval tonight will have this done and we can submit this to them and they can start work on this shortly. And that's what I have.
Is there any questions from the council members with regards to either of those two
Robert, this is Kathy. I just want to thank you for providing the update. I know we talked about this some time ago. It's a, it's a big project that is going to be immensely beneficial to the town and to the schools as well, and so, you know, updates are always good and it's good to see that it should be hopefully ready to go sometime in the spring, you're saying? Is that, is that the estimation?
The, the Wi-Fi will be in the spring. I expect the fiber to probably be closer to either late spring, early summer.
Okay, alright.
And we'll hopefully have the equipment, most of the equipment we've already put in place. We, as we've been upgrading locations, we've been preparing for it. So we have a few pieces we have to get together to be ready, but I, I'm hoping we should be ready once the fiber's turned over to us.
Okay, and just one quick, Kevin, if you will, just a very thumbnail sketch about the benefits that this is going to bring to the, the various departments in the town and the, the locations where we're going to have fiber available. What would be, what are the benefits to that and how, what improvements will those end users see as a result of this?
At the locations, so some of the things that we're looking at is security with camera systems, so we can put cameras in different locations to monitor certain parts, like the park department. We could offer Wi-Fi in the park as well because of the buildings and grounds. We will be looking at, right now, we are looking at a project to do access controls for the firehouse, and they'll actually be using the servers from the, in the system that we use for the schools, so we'll have a unified access control system. We're also looking to expand that into the police department and other locations for safety, security, having one system and those different departments could use them. The phone system will be more robust, like I said, so that's going to keep lowering our costs for phones. We'll be able to turn off more of the old potlines moving forward. And then it'll also help us streamline and increase the capabilities at the outer locations as we become more reliant on technology. The, you know, someone at Buildings and Grounds and some of their equipment, they'll have access to, you know, internet to look up, you know, resources and things like that. The waste pollution control will have access to their systems in a more real time than just getting alarms, so they'll be able to monitor some things there. So those are just some of the basics as we move forward. The other thing that, you know, I'm going to just put this out there now as an idea, now that we have this backbone throughout the town, basically because of where the pump stations are, there is the opportunity down the line to expand the network. Certex does offer a fiber-to-the-home service, and if you were interested, we could even look at that down the road. Let's finish this first, but then that's something, we've talked about this in the past, I've talked about it, about the, when the state was running what's called the Got Gig connection, trying to get more homes, more competition in the internet service providers. And that would be another option that Plainville could do now that the fiber backbone is already there, we can build off of that. As part of that, if you know, if some of you've seen, Southington is getting a provider that's putting in, it's called Go Net Speed, they're putting a fiber-to-the-home gigabit connection for $100 a month unlimited. And the most, if any of you are on Xfinity, you, and have been reading, Xfinity wants to start putting in what's called data caps, prevent, you know, if you use too much data, they're going to start charging you for overages. I'm a family that's going over it, so I'm concerned about it. So those are some of the things that, you know, with the fiber in place, that we could take care, we can manage and use pretty quickly.
Yeah, I think that's an interesting concept in light of what everybody has experienced with the COVID, as a result of the COVID, with children being at home using services, with families being at home using services, and ultimately perhaps workers will be more at home than in an office setting using those kinds of services. So it certainly is looking like that is the wave of the future, and maybe that will be something we need to seriously look at down the road somewhere.
Yep, I think it makes the town more advantageous for people working from home, and I think as we're hearing, many companies are making decisions that they will let their employees to work, work from home, may not ever come back to an office or have a full corporate office where they may have just meeting rooms where you come in occasionally for. So yeah, it's definitely an interesting time.
Okay, thanks for the update, Kevin, I appreciate that.
No problem.
Okay, any other questions for Kevin about this project? We've been talking about it for a couple of years and now it's starting to physically come into place, so I appreciate the update and look forward to it being completed.
Kathy, I also sat in on a Capital Region Council of Governments Municipal Services Committee meeting this morning, where we heard a presentation from Western, what they call Western Cog, Council of Governments, about 5G. And believe it or not, as I understand it, those 5G antennas, which there have to be a lot of them, you know, in order to, you know, a lot more antennas than typical service, they, they require, I guess, control boxes, you know, on the ground, and some of those control boxes can take up some space, but putting that aside, those control boxes, as I understand it, as it was explained, need to be connected to fiber in order, you know, in order to generate the, you know, the 5G capabilities at the antenna stage. And by us having fiber in place and be able to easily expand it, it may provide us with some advantages to getting 5G sooner in, in, in Plainville than perhaps other communities.
Great.
So, you know, which also is certainly an economic benefit to businesses and, you know, to citizens as well. The speed on 5G is just, you know, 100 times faster than 4G, just to give you some perspective, that's how it was explained. So there's a lot, there's a lot that goes into having this fiber in place, especially if it's controlled by the town. We have better opportunities to negotiate with regards to use, and hopefully we'll be able to make it available to, you know, our residents at a, you know, at a, you know, reduced price for what they would charge otherwise, but that's subject to some litigation at the state level, which hopefully will get resolved in the not-too-distant future.
It's not going away, that's for certain. It's the way we all are operating now, so good to be sort of at the outset of the curve rather than trying to catch up.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
The next item I have is $6 million GO ban stands for General Obligation Bond Anticipation Note. The town recently went out to bid to renew $6 million in general obligation bond anticipation notes. The low bid was submitted by TD Bank with an interest rate of 0.23%. This is the lowest ban rate in several years in Connecticut for one, except for one for the town of Greenwich, which is a triple-A to ten, a triple-A town, at 0.18%. The town also mitigated the issuance expense by bypassing the need to issue an official statement. Plainville has an above-average double-A plus rating through Standard &amp; Poor, which allowed for strong investor interest and locking in an historically low interest rate. The ban will expire in September, at which time the town will permanently borrow these monies, permanently bond these monies. I do want to thank Rob Buden, Finance Director, and Barry Bernabi from Phoenix Advisors for their work, as they work together, you know, on this ban renewal. Just to give you a little perspective, we borrowed $6 million for approximately, you know, eight months, and our interest cost on that will be about $10,000. That's a pretty good deal from, at least from our perspective. Rather than go to the financial dashboard right now, I'll go with the COVID-19 update and then flip back to the financial dashboard. Vaccinations are now available to anyone over 65 years of age. Hartford Healthcare has announced that they are opening two new max vaccination sites soon. The first one will be located at One Liberty Square in New Britain and is expected to open next Monday. The town website has a link that will allow seniors to make appointments directly to that site. As opposed to going into the system and getting a lot of choices, there's a link that'll, that'll allow you to make those appointments in, you know, directly in Liberty Square. The second site is going to be located at Oakdale Theater in Wallingford, not sure how many people from Plainville will want to participate there, but that opens up on March, March 1st. And they're anticipating that both of those sites will do about 500 vaccinations a day, six days a week. Instructions on how to get an appointment for COVID-19 vaccinations can be found on the town website at www.plainvillect.com. The Health District is also beginning to reach out to the homebound. For example, Shane Lockwood is working with Linda DeSenzio at the Housing Authority to identify residents to schedule a vaccination at the senior housing complex. Sean Cohen is also providing transportation for those seniors who need it to get to the vaccination sites. And any senior citizen who needs assistance in scheduling a vaccination, having problems doing that, can contact Stephanie at the Senior Center at 860-747-5728, and she will be happy to help you. There's no questions about the COVID-19 update? I'll go back to the financial dashboard.
Robert, just one comment about COVID-19 and the vaccinations. Is it generally thought that people are having more capability to register for those vaccines and get them done versus a month ago? I know that was a problem for a number of people trying to get appointments due to long waits on telephone lines or some folks inability to, you know, log in through a computer system and do it over the internet. So is Sean finding that things are starting to pick up and moving a little more quickly for people?
Yes, it appears that as they improve the system and get more operators, so to speak, more people working on, you know, on scheduling, that it's, that's, it's getting a little bit better, it's getting better than it had been. These direct links are helpful, and I think people are, you know, we're learning the workarounds, because under some of the systems, you have to have an email address.
Right.
On other systems, you don't have to have an email address. Having that direct link to Hartford Healthcare, I think, will make things smoother for scheduling as well. So yes, yes, people are, are beginning to answer the phones now. You know, in the past, you'd get a busy signal for a couple of days and you'd just, you'd be hit or miss. So it does look like things are getting a little bit better. What would be more helpful, though, is if we could get more vaccines out of federal government, because we are somewhat limited in how many we can do, you know, just because we, you know, we don't get as, you know, we could, we could use more vaccines.
Well, just one more comment, Rosemary. I know that some folks are opting out of getting the vaccine, so regarding more vaccine is the, do you know if the estimation of how much we need is dependent on everybody getting it that's available or just a percentage of those? Because we do know that not everybody wants to get this, and some folks have opted out. So do you know that, or is that just kind of, they're seeing how it goes?
Well, what it allows is the, you know, the more vaccines we get, the sooner that, you know, other categories, you know, younger people can get the vaccines as well. So, you know, when they start seeing the, you know, that, that people are, are not making appointments as quickly and, and things start to die down in a particular age group, then they open it up to another, you know, to the next, to the next age group. So, so, you know, as it stands right now, we can take any, you know, pretty much anything they give us. It's really on the tail end where, you know, where, where, you know, every, all of the age categories, you know, have been allowed to get the vaccine, and when they start to see that slowdown, then, you know, that, that's when I think the supply will make it, you know, will, will be, will make a difference.
Can I, Rosemary, did you wish to add something?
Yes, I, when I got my mail this afternoon, I just wanted to say that the Senior Center has sent a mailing out to everybody who's registered with them, giving them the information that Robert just outlined, including the offer of assistance and making appointments, and including some more detailed information about the dialer ride for transportation. So I thought that was a very good proactive thing, kind of the old-fashioned hard copy, but for, you know, many people, that might be particularly helpful. You know, that you're, you're, you're sort of being bombarded with it on TV and all this, but I think the one local communication may be very helpful. So I was, I was impressed with that, that was a good idea. You know, we do need to support and encourage our folks to be vaccinated.
Thanks, Rosemary, I agree. I think that some folks are just not, do not have devices, they're not, they don't feel comfortable on computers, and that's a very good thing that our local Senior Center did that.
Yeah, no, I was, I was.
They're aware of their, you know, opportunities to get those things done.
Yep, I was pleased to see that today in the mail, yeah.
Great, thank you so much. Anybody else wish to weigh in on this? Okay, thanks, Robert.
All right, we'll move on to the dashboard. The dashboard for the first seven months of the fiscal year, which is basically through January 31st, was included in your meeting information package, a little bit, I think it was earlier today, and was posted on the town website as well. Now go through that. On the expenditure side, we've spent pretty much 60% of our budget, and that's pretty much at the two-year average, general government budget. Again, it's, it's pretty much at the two-year average. It's pretty much at the two-year average as well as the Board of Education budget. So they're pretty much online, nothing out of the unusual as far as either of those budgets are concerned so far. Police overtime stands at 67% through the first nine months at $369,000. It's, it is about $46,000 less than the two-year average. So we'll, we'll hopefully, you know, we we may exceed our $550,000 budget, but, you know, perhaps not by as much as we've seen in in the past years. Roadways overtime, you know, is pretty much where we were at, you know, last month. We, we haven't had any additional overtime, you know, that 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 went over substantially you know, in in past reports, which is the same as the buildings and grounds overtime. Roadway snow is starting to pick up now. This does not include February, which is when we got a couple of big storms. So we're still under our two-year average, but I think we'll catch up during the month of February. And which goes for buildings and grounds and both the roadways as well. So on, on our municipal solid waste, we are 264 tons above our two-year average. You know, so, so, you know, right now that represents about $17,700 more than what we had budgeted. I will tell you that last month, I think we were projecting somewhere around $23,000 being over budgeted. So the January tonnages were less than the tonnages in January last year. So maybe that trend will continue going forward and we'll be able to close that, that deficit gap, projected deficit gap. On the recycling side, it's only through, it's only for the first six months. The, the information on recycling comes in a little bit later. We're 42, 42 tons over our, our two-year average, but the price is down from what we had budgeted. We budgeted $87.19. Right now, the, the current tip fee was $73.35 and that mainly has to do with the revenue that the, that our recycler gets for the recycled material, which fluctuates by month to month. But it looks like they're seeing more revenue than what we had anticipated. So we're paying less per ton based on our contract with, with Murphy Road. Is there any questions on the expenditure side? If not, I'll go to the revenue side and I know that there's an update on the revenue side. So I would, you know, maybe perhaps ask you to look at the screen, which might be helpful. You do not have this information. This became available this afternoon. First off is all revenues. We've received 81% of all our revenues and the two-year average is about 84, 84%. I will say on current taxes, I did this work over the weekend and I did notice that we were running behind on current taxes. I I met with the, with Rob Budin this afternoon and the tax revenue collector and the assessor. And it it turns out that some of the information was not updated, the actual amount. And you'll see two columns up on the screen. One is January 31st and one is February 1st. You may recall that January 31st was on a Sunday, February 1st was a relatively large snowstorm. So, you know, people who were coming in, you know, February 1st or or mail coming in on February 1st, you know, there were some delays. So the actual January 31st total was really $44,465,000, which put us at 93%. Our two-year average is 95%. Well, if it's February 1st, which is one day later, you know, our actual collection is at $45,308, which is at 94.84%, which is, you know, pretty close to our two-year average of 95%. So after looking at the numbers, I think, I think it was a little bit of a timing issue. And at this point in time, there, we don't feel as there's anything significant to be concerned about. I will tell you that we have, you know, the, the, the tax department has delayed making what we call demands, tax demands, which is, which is the the step we take right before we turn it over to the town attorney for those tax sales. We've delayed that since the COVID-19 pandemic has started. So it goes back a ways and those demands, they they get, they get, they can tend to have pretty quick action for people who owe us a lot of taxes, you know, more than two years' worth of taxes. But we've been somewhat reluctant to, you know, move those forward during the pandemic. So I think that has a little bit of an impact on our, on our tax collection rate. But, you know, not significant, you know, you know, not, not really significant at this point in time. So I I know that, you know, I had some questions about the current tax revenue. And and then, you know, that's why we had this meeting and that's why you see that update up on the screen. Does anybody have any questions about at least, you know, the revenues of the tax collections? All right. There's no change with regards to the fund balance since our last meeting, so we're still projecting, you know, where we stood last month. On our special funds, recreation, you know, we, we haven't been offering the programs because of the pandemic. We've spent, you know, 23.64% of our, our expenditure, you know, our budget. And on our revenue, we received 29% of our, of our budgeted revenues. So, you know, that's, you know, at least our, our revenues are exceeding our expenditures at this point in time. Robertson Airport, you know, pretty much on budget. The last month, we paid the payment in lieu of taxes, which is a $70,000 payment from Robertson Airport to the tax collector's office. So that transfer was made. That's why you see 80,000 of the 89 spent. And our capital and other expenses amount to 66,000. That's coming out of our, out of the Robertson Airport fund balance. And we're pretty much online on the, on the revenue side of that budget. Our current fund balance in the, in the airport is $468,000, plus or minus a couple of dollars. On the water pollution control side, expenditures are running pretty much where they should be. The quarterly payment is, is, is the water pollution control has to make a quarterly payment back to the town. That's why those are running a little bit under the expenditures, but they're going to pay the town back for some of the benefits and whatnot that that they get run through the town budget. We just have to make that transfer. Revenues are pretty much in line with where, with where they have been over the last two years. And you remember, they get billed out in the, in November, you know, so, so they're, they've caught up. On the Plainville Library expenditures, they're running a little bit under the two-year average and the revenues are running a little bit over the two-year average. So as far as the special funds are concerned, you know, nothing to be alarmed about. Okay. Does anybody have any questions with regards to the special funds? If not, I'll go to the major projects report, which not surprisingly, there hasn't been much, you know, much action on that either. Road bond is quiet for the winter. We will have some, we will have, be asking the council for some some approvals for, you know, use of materials and subcontractors at a future council meeting, perhaps the March 1st one, to get, you know, lined up for the springtime work. Our phosphorus project, we spent in January about $28,000. We're still running under budget with that project as it winds down. They expect to start up the phosphorus system. They don't run it in the wintertime. They expect to, you know, start that up next month in March. The Wheel of School project, really no, no update on that. Nothing really has happened in the last month. There's some, you know, they're doing some final punchless work on that project, but nothing that where we paid any monies. We still expect that to come in under budget. Parking lot project and the turf maintenance fund, you know, really no, no changes at all. So if anybody has any questions about the major projects report, we'll try to answer them for you. And if not, we'll go to Matt Dasko on the happenings. Matt, do you have any happenings this evening?
Good evening. I've got a relatively short list of happenings for this evening. The Senior Center continues to assist with COVID vaccination scheduling as we discussed a few moments ago. I also just wanted to add, for those who don't have computer access, there are computers available at the Senior Center as well as at the library. Other classes offered by the Senior Center this month include a homemade cooking class for pizza, birthday bash for those of us that have February birthdays, including a drive-through treat auction and then a Zoom connection. There's a men's health session coming up later this month on February 25th. And the final is a book club for this month, ending on February 26th. If there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Robert and Matthew for your reports. We do appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Robert or Matthew with their report that they gave us tonight? Okay, good job. Once again, thanks very much, both of you.
You're welcome.
Yep, okay, moving on to the rest of our agenda. We do not have any old business items on our agenda, so we'll go right to new business. We have, it looks like one item, is that right?
It's like it, Madam Chair.
Must have nothing else happened. Yep, go ahead.
Motion to approve the tax refund is listed on the addendum.
Second motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Takes care of new business and any other discussions of interest? Robert, do you have anything else you'd like to bring forward?
I don't have anything. I, the, other than the Valley Water, we talked a little bit about that. They have public hearings on Thursday morning, Friday morning and Monday morning. And as a, a intervenor in that process, I will be participating in all three of those public hearings and asking question, further questions of Valley Water and hopefully having some type of influence over whatever decision is made with respect to their request increasing.
Okay, thank you for that. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Okay, skipping along, we don't have an executive session, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn.
Second motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, great. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Just as a point of information, I spoke to Robert Lee about this and my hope is to have an in-person meeting beginning March, at our March meeting, all, all contingent upon COVID activity levels. So right now they're at about 2.8%, which is pretty low. And so we'll see where it is by that point, but I'm hoping that in March we can get back together. After the first meeting, we will, we will be having our budget work session. So we have a lot to go, to do in March and my, my intent is to get us back together in the council chambers.
Yes, and that March 1st meeting will include, you know, a presentation of the town manager's recommended budget to the town council. We've got, you know, a couple of changes since we met in January. We'll, we'll go through them and some of them are good and some of them are not so good. But again, we're just at the beginning of the process and there's a, you know, a lot that may happen in between before the council makes the final recommendations.
Okay, sounds, sounds good. All right, we had a motion and a second and we're going to adjourn. So I want to thank you all for this evening and we'll see you again at our next meeting.